Their prices have doubled. Because they just can't get, you know, supply demand thing.
Well, I hope we have our Aqua Fest fireworks already locked up.
Well, we're not going to have Aqua Fest fly.
I
But we're gonna
I reckon there are going to be limited Aqua Fest. Is that, am I, did I read that wrong, everybody?
So the meeting is recording now. It's after six o'clock. So I think
Oh, there we go.
Probably be handing it off to the, the chair to get us rolling.
Yeah, I'm just verifying. So I'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Roll call. The only person I, oh, never mind. He just showed up.
Yeah, sorry about that, Chris. I had another meeting. I just got off, so.
No worries. So it looks like we got everybody here.
No Roger.
I'm here. Roger's here.
What is it? What?
There he is. He's right there. Okay.
There he is.
Um, we also got council member tangent with us. And I thought I saw Mary on here somewhere. There she is. So we got, I don't think we have any guest business. The only item we need to do is approve the meeting minutes. Everybody get a chance to read those? Anybody got any changes?
No changes.
Oh.
No changes.
Hey, can I get a motion to?
The only change we need to do is, is we members absent last week were Mar, or last time were Marlene and Brian. But we only put Marlene down as approved.
Oh. Good catch, Carl.
Yeah.
Did we?
I sent an email to ask for my absence to be approved.
And we meant to, I think it just didn't get marked down.
So that just needs to be, we voted on it to approve him, right?
Carl.
Yeah. So we just need to add that in there.
Teresa, we didn't do it?
Did we not do it?
Oh, no, we did not. At the time that we took roll call, we asked if we had anybody had heard from Brian and none of us had. So we just went on. So we didn't actually make a motion to excuse or not excuse. That's why it's not in the minutes. We can amend the minute. I did, I did see the email from Brian later on. But it was after the meeting.
Action this evening to excuse if that's the
Yes.
Direction.
Can I get a motion to excuse?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Carl, you made the motion and Marlene, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I can't when I wasn't there.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, aye. Okay, so outside of that. Uh, before we get into parks update, I was actually supposed to start with this after roll call. I talked to Jill. Um, we will
Do we actually have a motion to approve these minutes?
No.
No, we didn't. Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Thank you, Carl.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Before we go into parks update, just let the park board know. We'll do our parks update and then we will adjourn this meeting. And I'll be turning it over to Jill at that point. Um, she's got a presentation. Want to make sure that you guys know that at the end we'll be able to make comments. We'll be able to discuss the new plan. Um, and Jill's kind of leaving it open for us to uh, make comments if we, if we need to, if we got questions coming in asked of us. So I just wanted to get that out there before we get to Jill's. Um, because Jill's going to take over the parks update right here. And after that, we will move into our um open house section of the meeting tonight. So Jill, if you could give us the parks update.
Sure. So as you know, we're, we're temporarily suspending your discussion on the vision and mission just for the purpose of making sure we get this open house um, done tonight. So we will be coming back to that in your future meetings. Uh, North Cove, the park, uh, opening, this was sent out on Friday. So the park opening has been delayed due to vandalism. Uh, but it's still scheduled to be open by June 18. And it ended up, portion of it opened up a little bit early, but the restrooms are not quite finished. So the restrooms have been, um, they're not open to the public quite yet. Rustic Cork Wine Bar, they came out to Davies Beach. They have adopted that beach with North Cascades crew and they did a lot of really hard work. They spread a lot of mulch. And they pulled weeds. They rehabbed the picnic tables and they planted some trees out there. And Eagle Ridge Community Gardens. I don't know if you know Kristen Hunt, but she's been a volunteer out there for, um, for a long time with Debbie Dottry and she has decided to step down. So we want to thank her for all of her hard work out there. I know that it's, it's been a long time and a lot of work that, that she's put in. So we'll be looking for volunteers to fill her shoes. Uh, cameras will be going in at Frontier Heights pretty soon. Um, Lund Park hosted the Lake Stevens High School graduation festivities. At the conclusion of their parade last week or last weekend, uh, not just this last one, but the one before that on the fourth, or yeah, I believe it was, they did a parade around the lake and I saw some video footage. It looked like they had a really, a lot of attendance in the pouring down rain and but they had a little fun for them. And to go, uh, you know, to afterwards so that they could, um, mingle and they had a DJ out there. It was a good time for them. Um, and the events, recreation and culture portion, the farmer's market opened up on that first Wednesday in June. It was really they had about 80 vendors. And, um, we're trying to implement a couple of changes. One is, is we've closed, um, Main Street during the load in era time for the vendors to come in and load in. And then also, um, at the actual market, the food vendors have been down there, uh, because the festival street was construction. That seemed to work really well. We got some good feedback from the vendors that, um, that they did really well down there. So they had it, uh, we implemented those changes for last Wednesday and so we'll, we'll check and adjust as we go along. And pedestrians are, yeah, we also created a really nice pedestrian space too. So for people crossing the street there, there was a safe spot and people driving by looking at there wasn't, looking at the event wasn't accidentally, you know, putting anyone in danger. So um, we have met and with a group that's interested in doing a suicide awareness run in August. They are turning it into, um, not just a run, but an event as well. They'll have mental health professionals as well as some vendors and, uh, some food trucks and beer garden. So I, some of our park board members are runners. So, uh, that might be something fun. Fortunately, this is a subject that's affected our community. So we're, we're happy that someone is taking up the charge. We also, uh, went to council, uh, last week with it. So, um, so maybe we'll have some council members in there too. Uh, Tai Chi is still being held on Sundays at noon for no cost to the community at North Cove Park. Uh, we also have a six week challenge, fitness challenge at Lundine. There is a couple of different class times available. If anybody would like to participate, that information is on our website or you can contact me. Um, hydrology stand up paddle boards will, while they are open on, on the more, they started on Memorial Day and they're weather dependent though. And, uh, Skyhawks begins next week. All of our, uh, youth athletic recreation program. So we're excited to see them start up again. It was really well received last year. And the Lake Stevens Band held their first rehearsal last Monday night and their second rehearsal is tonight. So that's a neat, um, a neat program if anyone's interested and they will be performing at the farmer's market. I did get a request, um, to, to go over some of the vandalism and it is unfortunately, um, a lot.
Oh, wow.
If anyone's not muted, if they can mute themselves, I'm getting a little bit of and, um, so I talked with our public works director and it looks like, um, the list is, the buildings have been egged, the galvanized steel that, um, is around the, the kind of the wainscoting on the outside of the building has been kicked in. They've also kicked in our trash cans. They've stolen plants out of the landscaping. Uh, there's graffiti, obviously, um, throughout different elements on our bollards and, and through the signs in the parks. They've also, um, bashed out the lights at the picnic shelter at North Cove and then they've also removed some of the stall um, walls in the restrooms themselves. They've also taken something sharp and they've carved into, um, the stalls. The stall surrounds. So there's a couple of other things, but it was pretty disappointing. So, but I thought that I would pass that along. We've started getting some volunteers coming forward to help with the graffiti cleanup. And then of course, hoping that, you know, we get some watchful eyes on the park. And if you see anything that, um, doesn't look right, definitely contact the police. And, uh, hopefully we'll get a handle on that. Does anyone have any questions about the parks update?
I just want to know about the, have the police, um, in, uh, done more patrolling now that all this has happened in that area or?
I believe they have, Roger. Yeah.
There's a sign, I was just actually just out there with my kids. Sign that says that it's under video surveillance. Is it actively under video surveillance now or?
I know it's coming if it's not already. Um, but I know that that was definitely a priority for the mayor to get cameras in the parks, especially where this, you know, is taking place.
The, the video cameras, I think the signs you're thinking about are attached to the mill and around the plaza area and those are active.
Um, so these would be, um, at the, um, the, the shelter where the, the restrooms are next to the playground. There's a sign right on the, you know, one of the shelter, um, you posts there that, that says that it's under video surveillance.
Okay. Yeah. I can't answer that one if they're active or not yet, or just getting the signs up in preparation of the.
Gotcha.
Alright.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute myself again. So do we have any, anybody else got anything else? Any questions on parks update? Does anybody have anything else before we adjourn the meeting?
Well, I, I just like to know when this meeting starts, do we give any input or we just sit and watch and then we give our input to the city after the meeting?
There, Jill's going to give us a chance for us to give our input. Um, she's going to do our presentation. Um, she also would like us, if there comes a point where we have questions, if someone asks something and we don't understand, you know, we're, uh, please ask them for more clarification so that we understand what the questions are being asked. And, and I do believe Jill's going to go over it a little bit more once we get started on that, that portion of the meetings. So anybody
Do you mean, I'm sorry?
No, go ahead, Tina.
Do you mean, um, if we want to clarify from someone who is is coming to testify? Or we're clarifying what Jill's presenting?
E- either or.
Okay.
Either or.
I'll, I'll run through my presentation and then, um, you, the park board will be given an opportunity to comment. And then, um, the, uh, question and answer for the public will be opened up and you're welcome to participate in that and answering the questions that that come forward or, um, we, I kind of envision it as, um, being interactive.
Okay.
So with that said, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
That Carl made the motion, Roger to second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Jill for the open house part of our meeting.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, park board. Um, I would like to, uh, begin the open house, the presentation for the 20th Street uh, park design. We have some, uh, some great information to share. I'm Jill Mies. I'm the Parks Planning and Development Coordinator for Lake Stevens. With us tonight is also Russ Wright, who's our Community Development Director. And then we have our, our park board members as well. So the overview of this meeting is, um, to get that vital public input on elements of this project and to gain a better understanding of the needs of the community when trails, parks and recreation are developed within our community. The agenda is I'm going to go over some expectations for the open house, give a little bit of background. And then, uh, we're going to show some plans. As well as, uh, we're going to do for the first time a live poll during the Zoom meeting. And so we're going to ask our participants to vote. That's going to be an option at the bottom of their Zoom screen when those questions come up. And you're going to be polled on your preferences for elements of the playground, amenities and some design options. Then we'll move into that, um, effect Q and A and, uh, the park board feedback as well. I'm going to go over some of the
I have a question.
Yeah.
It's Tina, I have a question. Um, do you want the board to participate in that or do you want us to wait and, and weigh in? When we have our, go back to our formal meeting?
Um, the formal meeting is, is adjourned for tonight. So now we're just going to move into that house. And if there is something comes up during the presentation, you have a question for, you can, you can definitely ask a question if it's, you know, pertaining to that area. And at the conclusion of the presentation, the park board will have that opportunity to make some comments on it.
Oh, I was, I'm sorry. I wasn't clear. I'm talking about the, um, the, um, I lost my thought.
Voting. Do you want us to vote?
That's the word I need.
Yeah.
Oh, you can participate. Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. So we are here today to discuss this project for the first section of the West Side Trail. So it's pretty exciting. This is our first, um, trail kickoff uh, meeting. Um, we do ask our attendees to stay muted until called on and to limit your comments to two minutes. And then also just asking that you provide input related to this project. There's a lot going on around the city. And if you have some questions or comments, you can definitely contact me offline. But tonight we're going to focus in on this project. And we want to treat each other with respect, make sure everyone has the chance to speak. And respect each other's times and limit your comments to add comments that maybe are on elements that haven't been previously mentioned. If you, um, raise your hand and and agree with what someone has already said, you can simply state that you agree, but, um, we're going to try to get some, some added comments from, from this meeting. And also to provide those solutions to balance that community good. So we wanted to go in a little bit by why we chose why here and why now? So to give a little brief, uh, history and overview of how the city plans projects, uh, the Lake Stevens Parks are prioritized in the parks and recreation element of that comprehensive plan. We also refer to this as the Parks Plan. It'll come up and be called that as well. Public input is paramount in developing this plan. It sets the level of service and it, um, it gives us that that conduit of information from, from the community. With the last major update, which we periodically major update and then each year we update, we make small, um, changes to it as needed. Uh, the city created a survey and invited participation from the community. We also held, um, open public meetings about it. Uh, we had some information at Aqua Fest. We go out into the community and try to get that information. And based on the results from that survey, playgrounds and trails emerged as a favorite among those surveyed for use of our parks and rec. Exercise with pets is also the top choice when asked, what leisure and recreational activities do you or members of your household, including children, participate on a regular basis? Um, this particular area of the city, the city acquired one parcel of this project from Snohomish County that was set aside as as a park and rec property. And then also purchased two of the adjoining parcels. So one is, uh, in the area of the uh, parking lot. And then the other is north of what was used as the athletic fields. And then also, when we purchase property with public money, we have a duty to activate that property for the intended purpose when we use that money. A brief history and just kind of a timeline is in this location at the southern portion of this project, there are some practice fields. And dating back to 1987, that's when the formal easement was recorded by the landowner to dedicate the property for the use of those athletic fields. They, um, Snohomish County was, was, uh, the owner of the property and they transferred it in 2016 to the city. In 2019, the Lake Stevens City Council requested a comprehensive trail plan be drafted to connect the city in the non-motorized way. And also a little later in that year, city staff, uh, we started to work with a consultant to draft that Trails Master Plan. Through that plan, we had a really robust public outreach. We received a lot of comments from the public. We had an interactive map where people, um, chose where they traveled. They marked it on the map and, um, kind of an open ended question was where would you like those connections and where would you like, um, the trails to go? What do you want the trails to look like? And, um, some great information was gained from that. Um, we also identified that network using that interactive map and then in our meetings as well. And then in 2020, the Trails Master Plan was adopted by the Lake Stevens City Council and the West Side Trail was identified as a priority. And of course, the West Side Trailhead is where the property on 20th Street, um, Southeast is some of those trailhead amenities are going to be located there. Um, we've also had some questions about the Cavalero Dog Park. So I thought I would touch on that to give everybody information. Um, the Cavalero Dog Park is a county owned park in the 20th Street corridor. It is, um, closer to this piece of property, but, um, that property is not under the city's control. That's the county's property. Uh, the main dog park area is just under two acres and it has, um, approximately a quarter acre shy dog area that's separate. And although the main area is just under two acres, approximately one acre is in a critical area. And that critical area gets really wet and it's, um, it's flooded during the wet season. The planned dog park area for this proposed project is approximately 1.64 acres and then it has the option of adding a quarter acre shy dog park. Um, and it could be in a, uh, on the same parcel, but in a different location. So it wouldn't cut into the larger dog park area. The proposed project at 20th Street, um, is outside of those wetlands. So it is, uh, there's some protection of critical areas in that. And it can be used year round. Also, this project does not affect Cavalero. If the county continues the use of Cavalero, it would, um, it would just be, it, it's, you know, it's intended use and it would be extra inventory for dog park use. So now we're going to get into some of the other, um, you know, comments that we heard at previous meetings. And then also I, we want to make sure that, um, the public knows that those comments are heard and that they're integrated into these plans. So we did hear from the surrounding neighborhoods that there's parking impacts. And people are parking in their streets. They're clogging it up. Um, and it's been a source of, of, um, irritation for them. And so we did add additional parking to this project and situated the incidents away from where, um, that, uh, that parking impact to that neighborhood has taken place. And then we're also adding signage to the project. Here is a breakout of the additional parking. Um, the additional, or the original parking was just this section, um, on this parcel. We've extended it into um, below the, the practice fields as well as adding an additional trailhead off of 12th Street, which is at the north end of this kickoff project. I'm going to show you an overview of the whole project, but it's very linear. So there's a lot of, yeah.
Um, how many extra parking spaces did you add and what's the total parking spaces now? With this plan?
Russ, do you have the total count? I can count the additional that we added.
It's going to be somewhere right around 50 stalls between the two parking lots.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then also some privacy for those surrounding neighborhoods that flank the park. Um, we added an additional landscape planting area that required is five feet and we're proposing 10 to 20 feet in those areas adjacent to the park use. And then also the addition of fences. This is also a cut out from the plan, but it shows the landscape screening buffer that's adjacent to those residential houses. And then also the protection of critical areas. And this project, um, we avoided any new impacts to any critical areas as well as, um, removing all those invasive species. And, um, we think that that is definitely a net gain. These are our site plans here. Again, that the plan is very linear. So it, um, to chunk it up into areas that you can actually see it on the screen. I have better, um, separations of it and I'll show you the overall, um, park as well. So for the next portion of the, um, of the open house, we are going to try this live poll. And so what I'm going to show you is, uh, different options for the elements. And then there will be a polling button at the bottom where you can, um, select which one is your favorite. So I'll go through, uh, for the playground elements. I'll go through three different slides showing different materials. And then at the end, um, the question will come. Uh, we hope it will come electronically and you'll be able to collect it and we'll be able to know those, um, those answers right away. Teresa, do you need me to stop sharing? I just thought about that. Or can you do it at the same time? Well, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I mean, I, I pulled up the poll option like we did and I mean, I'm all, I'll type the question in. And then I don't remember, do I need to share my screen or is it just going to pop up? I think it just pops up. I think that's what we I think that's what we did when we did our test. So I have that up and ready to do the first question. Thank you for your patience. Um, option number A is a composite playground. I think that, um, we mentioned it in the, in the survey that we had out online, but our we're, we have some constraints because of the overhead power. It, none of the playground equipment can be made out of conductive materials. So those metal options that are, we find in most of our playgrounds are not able to be constructed in this stuff. So here's some composite playground, has a climbing feature, some slides. And a little bit of shade cover. There's wood and this one is, um, they can add color to it or they can have just the, uh, plain wood option. And then the concrete play, which you have some animals here. There's a lot of different choices and in the styles, but those are our three options for playground equipment. So out of those options provided. And when we give you, um, the opportunity to vote, we'll leave it up there for a little while. So I can go back and show you the options again.
Jill, should the, uh, the options have populated on our screen?
Yeah, it should have. If you hit polls down below. There's an option where you would have like share your screen or the participants. There's also a button that says polls. If you click that. Oh, here, let me launch polling. Maybe that's it. There we go. Sit out there.
Yep. Now, now I see it. Cause I didn't have one for polls.
Yep. Sorry. Thanks Connor. This is new.
Awesome. Thanks, Teresa.
Great. I think everyone's voted. Hi. You want me to end the poll? Cause that's what I have to do each time and then we'll do, we'll do this stuff each time.
Cause that's what I have to do each time and then we'll do, we'll do this every time.
It looks like composite came out ahead on that one. Can everyone see those results?
Now, how about now?
We'll share those.
Now do you see them?
Thank you.
Right.
Okay. So the next question.
It was somewhere over that more. How did you discuss him too?
Um, I think that you had to end it and then give.
Here we go. Edit. I got it. Thank you.
That's it. Edit. Okay. Ages for playground. So we have at our, our playgrounds, we have different age groups that they're targeted. Most of the playgrounds, uh, have play features that, that all ages interact with. But, um, some of them are targeted towards a certain age group. So we would like to hear the feedback. You know, this is a site that there is some athletic fields there. So, um, it's, it's also to be used during, you know, that practice time. And then also, you know, folks just visiting the parks. So we wanted to know if there was an age group that you want to target, knowing of course that will provide play for everyone.
So, yes. I have a, another question that, um, this is for Chris or Roger. When, when kids go to practice, are families with, you know, other kids coming with them to watch? Or do they drop them off usually? What happens usually? Or is there a usual?
It's, there's not a usual. It depends on the field, community park. Uh, you'd get the families, everything, because there's a playground there. But there's a lot of area spread out where, um, Roger and I use Hartford a lot. Usually you don't get as many families unless it's a game practices, uh, which is primarily what, what is being used at 20th. Usually the parents drop the kids off and a lot of times parents will leave or they just hang out in their cars or they'll stand on the sidelines. But I don't notice a lot of siblings with necessarily that practice compared to like games. And, uh, you know, Roger, I don't know if you want to. You still here Roger?
Oh, Roger, I'm mute.
Yeah, sorry. I was going to say that the younger kids that are in a league, a lot of times the parents will stick around because the kids are young. But as the kids get older, it's like Chris said, they just drop them off and pick them up. But the younger T-ball and maybe the first year of, you know, soccer or whatever, usually the families stick around. So.
I, I have a question too. I'm curious as to what most of these, uh, locations typically target. Is it the two to five age range or five to 12? Do we have kind of a one-sided, um, um, kind of presence when it comes to, uh, these parks that are adjacent?
We, we have a variety. So if you look at Lundine, there's a, um, there's a, I mean, it's all in the same surround, but there's a separate play structure for that two to five, um, age range. And then there's the larger structure for the five to 12. What we have found, um, is that a lot of the younger kids want to play with the older kids. So they'll find a feature that they can play on for the, for the older kids and they'll interact with that. Um, if you go up to Frontier, that's aimed a little bit at, at an older group. Um, the, the playground that was, that's down at North Cove has some mix, um, for both of them. But because our, our, our site plan on this one is a bit compressed, we're not going to be able to provide, you know, really a, a large playground and, um, our, you know, with budget and all of that. So we obvious, we always include play features that everyone can use. But oftentimes we can kind of target that. So that's, you know, in the community, if we can hear back from people that have very young children or older children and say, you know, the, what we have offered right now is, is great for this, but maybe we'd like an emphasis in this age group moving forward. That's, that's kind of what we're trying to lean from, from this is, are we providing play for everyone in our community?
Thanks Jill. Yeah, I've noticed my kids have that same type of age gap. And they just both, you know, not recently moved into that five to 12 range. But it seemed that to me, they, it didn't matter what type of, uh, playground was, was, was there. Even the older kids were playing on the, you know, the younger, the, the younger, uh, I guess features. So I, I was just curious because I, to me that they all seem young to me. So it's good to have a baseline. Thanks.
Absolutely, man. So, um, in our next poll, we'll have choice number A is two to five years and B is five to 12 years.
No, I just did the same one again, didn't it? Um, yeah, it did. So kind of be the second question up there. Sorry. Stand by. So added question. We're watching the poll. There exists some forms. That's too much. Continue, continue. Yeah. So end the polling. It's not been much change since. Oh, here we go. Ha ha, I found it. Sorry. Very proud of myself.
Great job.
Yeah.
Good job Teresa.
Good work Teresa.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. It looks like everyone's voted. We. It looks like.
Overwhelming.
Overwhelming. That five to 12s have it. Great. So for park furniture options, same thing. Um, there's no metal allowed underneath, um, the, the overhead transmission. So the park furniture options can be made from wood or composite options. And I think I even have a concrete one in there. Um, however, that, um, uh, the wooden composite options are more realistic for this dark park. And they have, um, the placement of them. We have just limited it to wood or composite. So that is our third question.
Jill, this is Susan and I had a question kind of related to vandalism.
Yes.
And obviously we know vandalism happens. And I was thinking about this with the play structures too. With the available construction materials that we can use, is one preferable over the other for cleaning off graffiti or damage?
So on the playground furniture or the playground elements in particular, they both have their pros and cons. So the, the composite is, is easily, or is more easily cleaned. But the damage to the composite is harder to replace. So if it requires a replacement, um, the wood or, you know, concrete obviously is, is very durable. I can be painted over, but the wood, you could remove a portion of it and put it back. Um, whereas the composite, you know, if it's just paint, you can remove that pretty easily. But if you take a knife and dig into it, the whole part has to be replaced. And, um, that, you know, it could be costly and, um, and could affect the entire structure. So they both have pros and cons. I'm sorry. I don't have a better answer for you.
Right.
I have a question for you Jill.
Yes.
We looked at the, the playground equipment. Is there a cost, a big cost difference between, you know, the composite and the wood? Or is it, are they pretty similar or how is that?
Yeah.
They're what?
They're pretty. Yeah, the, the two costs of them, um, are, are pretty similar. The, the concrete is really, um, it runs a real large range depending on what the elements are.
Jill, I have a question.
Sure.
Do we have an idea about, um, the life of either wood or composite? Does one, um, have a longer lifespan in, you know, before we'd have to replace it or?
So the longevity of them, you know, barring any outside forces is, is about the same. The, the advantage to having the wood again is, you know, if you see the picnic tables at, at North Cove, there was the wooden ones there that were, um, there before the, the new ones were installed. Um, at times those can be cost effective. And then also if you destroy a, a board on them, you pull the board and put a new board on. Um, but then also, you know, in some of the composite options, those can be, that can be done as well. But, um, getting replacement parts right now. Um, you know, the wood is something that you can go to a hardware store. You can get the replacement, you can go to Lowe's and, and get a new, a new piece of wood. Um, the composite has to be ordered. And we're, we're discovering on some of our other projects, you know, just due to COVID, which of course is not going to last forever. Um, that, that some of those items are on, on backorder and a little more difficult to get.
You know, Jill, just, uh, um, this is Connor. It's, you know, kind of, uh, trying to build in the recent vandalism with, um, making, making determinations. Is there much precedent for vandalism of the nature that, that we've seen at, at North Cove over the last couple of weeks at other city parks? Or is it that it's novel? This is new. Kids are just going to go in and, you know, be stupid for days.
You know, the level that we're seeing is an increase. Um, but there's, there's certainly always been graffiti. There's always been vandalism. There's always been issues inside the restaurants. For instance, you know, people carving, you know, put things or whatever. Um, we're, I don't remember, you know, I've, I've been with the city a while. I don't ever remember someone bashing out the lights and kicking in, um, the, the corrugated metal on the side. Of course, the corrugated is relatively new. I think we're seeing an uptick in, um, in the, uh, you know, in the amount of vandalism. Whether this is a cyclical change that will go back down. Um, who knows what those, those circumstances are in which this happens. But, um, obviously.
And I can't recall, but did it, it was anything, did anything like this happen, uh, you know, a couple of years ago with Lundine?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Definitely inside the restrooms. That's, you know, like I said, that's always been an issue, but through the construction portion of it, um, yeah, I, I don't, I don't remember, uh, that, that taking place. Russ would probably have additional information on that.
Um, I would say that the vandalism that's taken place over the last six months, both at North Cove, Lundine, and actually along our South Lake Stevens Trail, a new monument that we opened up off 20th. That's been pretty unprecedented. And it's definitely escalated. Before that, you saw tagging of some road signs and some fences. But the damage that's being done to public property has really grown in the last, um, six months.
Okay. I appreciate it.
So I think we're ready for our next live poll of furniture options.
Okay, let's see if we can figure this out. They did?
Hey, nailed it.
I'm going to update my resume.
Oh, it's a close one. Okay.
Yes, for even Steven.
It is. And I don't know if the attendees, if that one is me and I'm not going to vote. But we can probably close the polling now. Oh, we got them all. There we go.
I guess, sure. Okay. Anyway, you got it? You got it?
It was pretty close. Composite sneaking ahead. All right, on to our next. So this is, uh, focused on the dog park. And they, dog parks provide that off-leash exercise opportunity and social interaction for, um, the dogs and the people alike. Inside the fenced park areas, would you prefer picnic amenities or benches or none?
Small here, dog park options.
I noticed in some of these pictures, it doesn't look like the park furniture is, is, uh, it's being used as a, um, a dog park play feature.
I'm sure it will be used as a, uh, dog park feature as well. So.
All right. Are we ready?
Bam.
All right. Okay. Everyone's voted. Good deal. Bunches. Looks like it's the winner. Fantastic. So this is kind of over the aesthetic and the fit and feel of the dog park. They can be designed with natural features for play or with those prefabricated dog park, um, features. Which dog park play features would you prefer? The natural or the prefabricated? The natural would be, um, made out of uh, elements that you would generally find on site. So some logs and boulders, those types of things. And the composite that's shown on the lower left, those are more of those, um, you know, you see them traditionally in dog parks, the, the composite uh, features of jumps and tunnels and whatnot. The natural can also be kind of those, um, large open fields. Ready? Yes. All right.
Doing good there Teresa.
Good deal. Everyone voted. Okay. So the natural features won pretty heavily. Okay. So for inside the dog park, trails offer an opportunity to get some exercise and teach some skills to our dog friends. For the fenced dog park, would you prefer a looped trail or a figure eight trail? Question or the answer A is the looped and B is the figure eight.
Hey, this is Susan and I don't have a dog. To someone who have a dog, can you give me some feedback on what this means?
I can, I can give you some feedback. When my dog was a puppy, I took her to a pretty large loop trail. She listened fairly well and decided that with, uh, all the room to run with the loop trail, uh, she took off and was gone for about 15 minutes. I think I would have been able to catch her a little bit quicker if it would have been a figure eight configuration. So, uh, that's, that's my thoughts, but I think it's a, it's, it's probably not a whole, you know, huge difference between the two.
Hi, thank you.
All right. Ready for voting? Ready for voting? Okay, we got everybody. You guys are getting faster. And it looks like the looped trail is the winner. So this is more of that dog park design. This is obviously a very rudimentary drawing here. But different dog parks are constructed in different ways. And some of them have the shy dog area adjacent to or within the greater dog park area. And then some of them have it separated out. So for those that use that shy dog area and those that use the big park area, what would be your preference? Would you like the shy dog area detached from the larger dog park or attached? And that's for the shy dog area. And the detached, the location of it doesn't necessarily have to be where it's depicted here. It's just mostly to get people's preference. We've heard feedback in, in both areas. We consulted with a local trainer as well to get some, some input. And having the shy dog area can be beneficial if you like them to be able to see other dogs or kind of interact like through the fence. And then others have said, you know, having them a little further away is easier for the, for the shyer dogs.
Launch?
Yes, please. All right, we have everybody. And it looks like attached is the preference. All right. So I wanted to show you where this live poll stacked up against the survey that we put out. So wood playgrounds were the preferred option in the, but you know, not by a ton in the, in the survey. The five to 12 age range sounds like it was the same here and composite furniture was favored over the wood. The benches, you guys were right in line with other folks from the community. They were preferred inside the dog park. Natural features over prefabricated dog park play. And the loop trail was preferred over the figure eight. And the attached. They were pretty close. It sounds like they were kind of close in this meeting as well, but they attached did emerge as, as the preferred alternative. It's a good deal. Thanks. That was, that was our first one and you did it. Congratulations. So this is the overall site plan for the project. And again, we can go back to any of the visuals that were put forth earlier to really zero down into some of these. And then I'm also going to blow it up at the end and kind of scroll through them and go over those, those features and those options. And it's just because it's the length of the park. Generally, when we have an open house, we have everyone come in and they're blown up and they're huge and you can interact and see them in this format. We are, we are trying the best we can. So the north parking lot and north is going to be on the left hand side. This is the parking lot that's against 12th Street and it's at this intersection of 87th. This is that additional north parking lot that was added. There's a landscape buffer and some bike racks. There's a water quality feature to collect that stormwater off of that parking lot. I did receive a question from the community regarding lighting. And for lighting of the parking lot, it will be lit, not, not like a commercial parking lot would be lit. And the lights will be shielded from the residential area. And I'm, Russ, are you familiar with where the lighting is proposed at this point?
No, no, we haven't gotten that far in design on this yet.
So we'll be looking at and obviously listening to that public comment as well as that those, those neighbors, you know, are not going to want lights shining in their, in their windows, which is understandable. And then also, so if you were to head south down this trail, you'll cross, there will be a pedestrian only footbridge that will cross over the wetland there. And that is just north of the Frontier Mobile Manor manufactured home community. So this is, again, these are just proposed, this is our first, you know, kind of stab at it. And then we'll be looking for some public comment to finish it off. This is the dog park area. It shows just the three different sections to it. Here and landscape screening buffer, five feet for the property on the south. And then there'll be a 20-foot buffer between this residential neighborhood and the dock park area. We did receive a public comment about water at the dog park. That is our intention to provide water at the dog park. For the folks to bring their own dog bowl dishes and we'll have to, of course, check with the overhead utilities and make sure that that's not going to be a conflicting use. But that's the plan as of now. So this is the south parking lot and playground area. This is that larger playground and then, excuse me, that larger parking lot. And then also the, you can see the play area, that's the, the footprint for the playground. And it has some bike racks proposed as well as, you know, some bowler, so nobody, so nobody. I apologize for that, sorry. And also so that nobody can get, drive down the trail. As well as some picnic amenities in that area and then some restrooms. You'll also notice that against that other residential area, there is a 10-foot landscape screening buffer as well. So with that, I'm going to, this moves into the park board input section of it. I will go back and blow up the, the overall or the overview of the project. And then we can kind of zero in if anyone has any questions on specific areas of that. And I'll see also about getting a better, a better visual. It looks like this one's kind of grainy, but you can see it's, it's a rather large project or long project, if you will, from the south to the north. So with that, I will hand it over to our, our park board to talk about, comment on. And I will get that other visual up on the screen.
Anybody from the park board have any comments?
I have a comment and I'm just wondering if the parking lot and lights inside the park are going to be solar? Or are they going to be your typical electric?
The parking lot lights will all be solar, however, inside on the trail corridor itself, that's not proposed to be lit at this point. All of our parks close at dusk, so it'll be very similar to the Centennial Trail. There will not be lighting along the trail just for those areas where vehicles will be.
Oh, go ahead, Tina.
When we made the 20-foot area by the dog park and we said we're going to put a fence, have we considered putting some concrete there? To help with the noise?
I don't think that we have considered that.
It might be something to consider.
This is Susan and I had raised that question as well, Tina, back when we had that conversation. And I thought there was a natural, some kind of a natural buffer. And Russ, I thought you spoke to this one too, that there was, I don't know if it rose up a little bit, some gradient. Is there something that helps buffer by those homes adjacent to that park?
And you did ask that question and over a portion of the area, there is a natural grade up and then the landscaping would be an additive. As far as adding a concrete barrier in there, I don't think that's something that any of the utility companies would allow.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Russ.
I was looking at the bottom part of the park. But yes, on that area, there is a little bit of topo. We're going to take from the park board first and then we're going to, for the question and answer from the public. So if you can hold on just a minute.
Golden, you have something?
I was just, I was curious about the footbridge, how big it's going to be and what the impacts might be. Going over what looks like to be a wetland area.
So the bridge is proposed to be eight feet wide pedestrian graded bridge. And Russ, maybe you can speak to the critical areas of the bridge placement?
Sure. So as we went through the preliminary design of this, the bridge placement goes across the narrowest portion of the wetland. And the bridge as we are contemplating, it would be a 50-foot long free span bridge with no direct impact inside the wetland. So the abutments for it would be outside of the wetland. And then as Jill said, it would be open, so there is light that can go through the structure. And then we would have to, the next step would be coming up with a mitigation plan and coordination with the different agencies.
Thanks for us, that helps.
This is Tina. I have another question about the trail itself. Since that's a pedestrian bridge, are we thinking that this trail is just going to be a walking trail? Or do we think there will be bikes on it? Or what, what was our thinking? I don't remember.
Any non-motorized form of transportation, so walking, biking, inline skates, those types.
So when we say it's a pedestrian bridge.
It just means, yeah, we could clarify that. There is no vehicular access on the bridge. The weight rating would not allow for a vehicle to drive across it.
But bikes can, okay.
Clarification, this is Susan. How wide is the walking trail as it approaches that bridge? Does it then narrow down quite a bit?
I think the, the trail was proposed to be eight to 10 feet wide and the, but the bridge itself would be eight feet. Is that correct, Russ?
Yeah, the majority of the trail is going to be closer to that, that 10-foot and it would get narrower as it approaches this bridged area.
Are you planning it that way because of remediation with it being wetland? Because otherwise it's like it might be creating a bit of a hazard. Going from wider to narrow.
That is a lot of it, keeping the impact as small as possible.
Anybody got anything else? I just changed my whole screen, so I don't know what I just did.
Great. Does the park board have any takeaway comments?
I, I personally, I like it. I like some of the, I like the extra parking too. Like how we shifted that parking over a little bit.
I like that we increased the buffer. I think that was really important because we heard that discussion quite a bit. So I think that was really good and that we shifted where the parking is. That was, I liked that too.
And the entrance is coming off of 20th now, correct Jill?
That's correct.
Yeah, and I like that. I don't, I didn't, wasn't a big fan of it coming off of that side street. I'm sorry, I don't know what street number that is. I didn't, I didn't like that. Anybody else got anything?
I would just agree with Chris and Tina. I, I think it's definitely made some, the plans made some improvements over the last time we spoke.
That's great. So I think if the park board doesn't have any more comments, we'd like to open it up for a Q and A with the, with the public. So if you have a comment, raise your hand. You can do that by clicking on the reactions. Or you can just visually raise your hand and we'll look through the participants and call on you. Hillary, I know you, you asked earlier, go ahead.
Um, I was wondering, so I went to the other park that's over by Wendy's. And check that out, took my kids over there. They really like their, my son's nine, my daughter's 12, almost 13, but they really like the swings over there and stuff. And they really liked the basketball court area. So I wanted to say something about if that was possible somewhere back here. Cause that was pretty cool. You know, the older kids, I think, kind of like the basketball area. So I wanted to mention that possibly. And then I did really like your guys' solar lights that you have out there. And I know that the parks close at a certain time, but since this trail is going to go all the way from 12th through, I think that a lot of kids like in the morning on the way to school are going to cut through to Cav. Cause it's a big shortcut and like the, you know, the few kids that have known that it's a shortcut, you know, over the years do try to come through and go this way if, if they know how to get back here, right? So I was thinking that maybe some of those solar lights would be nice on the trail back here. For that, because it's pitch black back here otherwise, you know.
Thank you for your comment. I think I, it's not Christie, but I see your hand.
This is Chad Bobby. I got two quick questions. So the 20-foot buffer that you're going to put on the backside of our, our houses over here for the dog park, is it going to be, it sounds like it's kind of in the air, is it going to be a mature, like tall bushes, trees of some kind? Are you guys just going to do a buffer with a bunch of little tiny shrubs? So when we sit on our back deck, we got to look at a bunch of dogs and people. Is there going to be a buffer that actually like protects some of our privacy?
So the buffer will be, will be a mix of different types of vegetation. We don't just do one type of vegetation. But there is a height requirement. I think that nothing be over 12 feet at mature height. So that, that buffer will be 12 feet high at the maximum. It'll be a variegated planting of different species.
So it'll be 12 feet in 15 years or it'll be 12 feet when you build the dog park?
I don't know too many 12-foot trees that we have that we put into the parks. I mean, obviously we would try to get the most mature species that we can to give you guys some protection. But as they grow and fill in is definitely when they, when you'll, you'll see the optimal privacy screening.
Okay, see, you're not going to put in 12-foot mature is what I'm, what I'm getting at, I guess. So it may take, it may take six years before we get any privacy back in our backyard again. It's, is the way it sounds to me.
We can definitely take that comment in and look at species that mature either quickly or look at, you know, purchasing larger specimens.
So my other question is, is the additional parking, is that, is that other parking lot at the other end of the park? Is that what I'm getting from this picture?
So the, what's in front of your screen right now or what's on your screen right now, this is off 20th Street. So this is the southern parking lot and then there is a parking lot at the north end as well against 12th.
Okay, because doesn't this road right here, you guys are saying the pedestrian bridge is non-vehicle access? Don't we have to create a access point for the utilities, for them to drive down the maintenance of utilities?
So the access for the utilities currently terminates at the Frontier Mobile Manor. And then there is a road that you can access off of 12th Street and there, it's across these, these residential properties. So currently there is not vehicular access provided. So we would be using the vehicular access that is already provided as, as much as we possibly can. But because it doesn't exist through here and we can't get anyone across this area, we have to look at moving people with the least amount of impacts to.
You guys do realize that every year that the power company brings out, or I think it's every Hillary would know. Every like three years, they bring out machines and they mow everything down to maintain it, which is a power utility, which I thought was a power utility. every, like, three years, they bring out machines and they mow everything down to maintain it, which is a power utility, which I thought was a power utilities.
Yes, they do mow and maintain. They call it vegetation management under.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
Jill, can you hear me? Sue F.
Hi, Sue.
Hi. I'm looking at what you have on the screen, and there's been a lot of discussion on the west side of the trail and the 20-foot buffer. But I've not, I'm sorry, on the east side, there hasn't been any mention on our side, on the east side. Are we going to get the 20-foot buffer also and the landscaping that the last gentleman was talking about? Because is this crisscross lines right where your arrow is? Is that the, our backyards?
That's correct, yeah. There is a 10-foot, so there's a, there's a five-foot landscape screening requirement. And we've doubled that on this area, and we've quadrupled it when it's adjacent to the dog park. Specifically, those folks talked about the noise that could be generated from that dog park area. So on your side of it, which your neighborhood is right here, if I'm correct, there will be a 10-foot landscape buffer and a fence.
Okay, will the fence be up against our land or outside of the buffer?
The fence will be against your, it'll be on the property line, on the city side of the property line, and then there will be landscape screening inside the fence, is generally how they've done it.
Okay.
If we put fence on the inside, it's really hard for us to maintain any of that vegetation.
Okay. And is where this little black cross line, is that coming all the way from the parking lot up, or where is that starting? It's hard for me to see this on this.
Yep, it's starting from the, and let me blow it up for you. This is coming from the parking lot, and it will north up to the area in which the athletic field ends. Now, in this area, there's also some topo. It goes up, and then there's, there's a kind of a drop off before your neighborhood up here. So there's already kind of a separation.
Okay, then I do want to talk about that, because where the top of your buffer is, okay, which is one, two houses from the turn. Am I saying that correctly?
Uh, one, two, right here?
Yeah. There's still maybe 10 more houses in Cardinal Estates up from this.
Correct. Is this, well, this area right now, we're not proposing any change, and this is heavily vegetated. So there is quite a bit of buffer already there, and, and because there's
The pond.
If there's no increase in in, you know, in use or impact there, then this area would be essentially the same as it is today.
Okay, so then just go down a dab. Where is the dog park on this?
That's up north. Let me shrink this out a little bit. The dog park is here on the west side, or on the east side, excuse me, of the park. So Cardinal Estates is right here.
Yes. So so across from the dog park, the buffer, the natural buffer we have on this, on the west side, will be left?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Um, I think that's my question. There are a few other Cardinal Estate people on here, but that may have answered their questions, too.
Sure. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah. Um, I was wondering if there's going to be access through the buffer, that 20-foot buffer, to the adjacent neighborhood. It's kind of a dual-edged sword. It might be nice for members of the neighborhood to have good access to the dog park. But there would also be a concern about people using that neighborhood as parking, seeing how it's kind of a distance. It's in the middle between the two parking areas. I'm just curious what the plan there is and what thoughts we put into that.
Yeah, at this time, we're not proposing. We would do a solid fence around the dog park, especially considering that, you know, there would be dogs loose in there. So we're not considering any type of access directly from that neighborhood. If there were individual, you know, neighborhoods or groups of folks that, that felt like that was, you know, necessary, we could definitely talk with them. But at this point, to protect their privacy, we would, we would probably not provide any type of access.
Good, thanks.
You bet.
I do have another question. On the Cardinal Estates, where the the black cross lines are and ends. Because I'm not exactly sure where that, what number that is. From that point on, would there not be any access for the people in the park to get into Cardinal Estates? That's been a big concern. Because we do have some visitor parking, and whether it's right or wrong, we don't want people parking in that and then crossing through our yards to get into the dog park, because it would be closer for them than going down to 20th Street. So I, I want to see that we, our backyards are still as dense as they are right now.
Yeah, I'm not, oh, I can definitely meet with you, and we can walk the side of that and to take a look. But we're not proposing any type of vegetation removal in that area.
Okay.
And we're not proposing any type of, you know, use adjacent to, to your parcels. But we can definitely, you know, walk the site and take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Okay, I see a hand up. Bobby?
Yes, hi, Jill. Unfortunately, my house is right there at the end of that fence, and then the blackberries start just past me. Can you see my cursor? Is that working?
No, I can't see that.
No, you can't. Okay. At the end of Yeah, right there, that would be my house. So I have absolute open access to the field, which has been, I've had, done it for 20 years. It's no problem to me. But with all the new people, and then I'm just going to have this, this space there, about 30 feet, where there's going to be fence, and then there's going to be blackberries, but mine is wide open. So when you come out to walk, that's one place I do want to, to address, just to see if there's I'm trying to put vegetation in there now, but it's going to be a while.
I understand for sure. That would, maybe we can talk offline and set up a time to, to see it in relation to the houses.
Yeah.
That's great. Bobby, I think we've spoke by phone and by email, so I actually haven't met you, so it's nice to see you.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any other comments? I'm going to cruise through here, make sure nobody's hands up.
I saw Brittina had her hand up for a minute.
Okay.
I'm good.
Not seeing anybody else. Well, I know this was a lot of information, and I appreciate everybody for their, their participation in this. And I hope this was helpful. We will be posting the survey results on our website, as well as this overview. It sounds like there's a couple revisions that we can work on. And it's really important to get your, your feedback early on in the process, so I do appreciate it. I know over the, the Zoom, it's not always the the easiest way to have a meeting. So I appreciate it all. It's nice to see everybody. If anyone has any questions or comments, you can reach out to me by email or by telephone. And if you were thinking of something and it slipped your mind and it pops back in as soon as you get off the meeting, like, happens to me quite a bit, then just shoot me an email or give me a call.
We have
I have a comment. Go ahead, Russ.
I was going to say, we had a comment from Mr. Bobby.
Yeah, Jill, I just have a quick question. When is, when are you guys looking, when's the next step in development starting? Do you guys have a start date? Or timeline?
We're, we're hoping for the summer to be able to start, at least the, the trail project. You know, it depends on how it works through our process, obviously. And I'm getting our, all of our documents together, and we go through permits, just like everyone else, but, but we're, we're shooting for this summer, late summer.
Okay, cool. And there's the, just to let you know, I'm against a concrete wall.
I was just curious.
That's
Thank you.
Good info. Thank you.
I have a comment. It's Tina. Jill, you did an excellent presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Really appreciated that. And Teresa, thanks for hanging in there. I just want to tell you, I really liked that. Good job.
Oh, thank you so much. Yeah, Teresa had this thrown at her last week as, hey, you think we can do this? So I appreciate it. You did a great job, Teresa. Was that helpful for everyone to be able to do the polls live?
Yes.
Good. I like the head nods. Great. Bobby, do you have something else?
I just wanted to say, I noticed that so many of the concerns were addressed. I've been to the other meetings, and so many of the concerns were addressed, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much. You guys are listening to us.
Thank you so much.
So Jill, the only thing I'd like to add is, before Hillary said it, I popped into my mind, and, and I'd like us to maybe look into a little bit. Because I remember in our last meeting, Hillary said the kids use that as a walkway come winter time. It might be kind of a dark corridor. I don't know if it's something we can at least, I'd like to see us at least look into, even if it's low lighting or whatever, to try to keep that, that, that may not be a bad idea. I know, like, the Centennial Trail isn't lit, but the Centennial Trail is not a, necessarily a connecting point. This may be something that maybe we can look into, and it might actually add a little, little I don't know, more of creativeness to the trail.
Yes. So what I'd like to do is to run that through our SEPDED. So that's our Crime Prevention through Environmental Design, and we'll police department about that, as well as look at, you know, underneath the power lines specifically, there, we're very limited on what we can put, especially something tall. So, you know, like you're saying, you know, the, the lower lighting or something like that, we can, we can discuss and talk about, but having that, that infrastructure. So we want to look at the, talk with the engineers and then talk with SEPDED as well. And make sure that, that we have some good good planning before. This would be the first time that we would essentially, when, when you light something, it appears open. So I think it could be, just thinking out loud, it could be misinterpreted. But then also, you know, if it was something that was on a timer, it was only during, you know, school beginning hours or ending hours or something. So let's, let's get some info on that and definitely bring it back. As well as the lighting for the parking lot itself, so that the residents on either side know what that process, what it, what that looks like and get their comments on that as well.
And that's what I was thinking, if we can do a survey or something too, if, if it's something that works out. And I was thinking more of the low lighting. I just got back from Bend a couple weeks ago, and, and their trail, and it's all low lighting. Granted, it's more of an, an open area, but something like that might, might not be a bad idea if it, if it could work out, and maybe it's starting something new.
Yeah. Carl?
Hey.
Are there kids walking water in now, or is it?
Well, right now, the, the wetland cuts off all access to 12th and those neighborhoods above, because there is no bridge there, and there's a cyclone fence from the, the manufactured home community on the corridor itself. So topography-wise, it's impossible to pass that right now. Once it's opened up, though, then you will have a better idea of, you know, what's been used and, or what will be used.
So there is kids that walk to Cavalero from the 88th Street by the dog park area right now, so.
Do they hop on that trail that that, that, like, the actual access road now and hop? Go down, yeah.
Yeah, it is being used that way right now.
Okay. Some of the kids in my neighborhood, like, throughout the years, some of them are older and at the high school now, but if they know me, I've let them go through my yard, because my house is basically the only way to get back there from, from up here on the other 88th, right? I'm not down off of 20th. I'm up in the other one by the dog park area. So so, yes, like, my kids ride bikes back there on the trail and stuff like that, because it's basically in my backyard. But, so some of the older kids would, and like, my daughter's starting Cav next year, so like, I'm sure that they'll be walking back there, too, and stuff, so. And definitely, if it's opened all the way with the walking trail to 12th, I just know it'll be easier for kids, and they'll be like, oh, I'm going to go the shortcut rather than, you know. So that's why I thought I'd mention the lights.
You got it. Thanks, Hillary.
Yeah, no problem.
Jill?
Yes.
You know, I thought I had, and this may be an overkill, because I can't visualize exactly how much foliage will have back there. But would it make any sense, since you know that you've kind of opening up a route more formally for kids to go? You know, at college campus, you know, they have the blue lights. But there was something more discreet than on, up on the pole, because we can't do it that way. But I'm wondering, again, this would be something, you'd just have to see if this was necessary or not. But if there would be something that, because again, even somebody back using the dog park. If there was, you know, you know what I'm talking about, right? The blue lights, like, they're kind of like the panic button, right? But I'm just wondering, again, how, how private is it back there, along there? Could someone have a problem?
Sure. And, and, yeah, obviously, that's why that SEPDED design, and, you know, like, we sometimes look at things on paper and think, this is perfect. And then it goes into use, and we start to hear from people, you know, like, this is not so perfect. So we want to make sure that we get good information and just, and do some, some good planning through SEPDED and exactly what you just said, Susan, because that was the first thing that flew into my mind, was like, oh. Yeah.
I know, when Hillary was making that comment, as the mom part of me started worrying, okay.
We do have to weigh it also against the folks that would be, you know, that their houses would be backed up to it as well. And the low light, like you're discussing, is not going to get light spillage onto those, those other areas. So I think that there's probably a good balance, and probably a lot of colleagues I know that have probably had a lot of experience with this. So I think it's, it's a great question. I have it lit, I have it on my, my notes here. So we'll get some information about that and bring it back.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Well, great discussion. Thank you so much for attending. Like I said, if you have any, any questions, you can reach out to, to Russ or myself, and, and feel free to to pass along any info that you have. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody, for attending tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye.